On June 17th, 2019 student recognition was held before the school board meeting. The recording of the regular business meeting of the D-128 school board from June 17th, 2019 starts immediately after this recording.
Okay, I will call the Community High School District 128 Program and Personnel Committee meeting to order while we will defer our pledge to the board meeting that follows. A real quick invitation for public comment, anyone go ahead and speak tonight, okay? And before we move on, we have a student recognition we would like to do right now, so Brian or...
Tom?
Tom.
Well, good evening on top of all this, the always proud principal of Libertyville High School and...
You're a big deal, right? You're a big deal, aren't you?
I'm not quite a big deal. Ethan is the big deal that we're going to talk about tonight, so I'm delighted to be here to present to the board and our community one of what I believe a student who's going to go down as one of the best athletes in Libertyville history, Mr. Ethan Burkhart. We're going to hear all about his track accomplishments. Ethan is a rising senior at Libertyville High School, and can you guess how many state champion medals he holds already as a junior?
How many does he have, Tom?
Nine. I'll say nine. Close.
I was going to say three a year.
So he's going to check me here. We've got four first-place medals, state champion medals in the track, one second-place medal and one third-place medal.
Wow.
Right? Yeah. Hi, oh, wait a minute. Sorry. Hi, state championship medals. And that's why I should let the coach do the talking about the track. But in addition to everything you're going to hear about him as a member of our track team and his accomplishments, Ethan is, we went out for lunch today and he said his summer's about to get busy because this weekend he is running a marathon up in Minnesota, in Duluth, Minnesota, the Duluth Marathon. And then he goes to track camp at U of I, it's one of the premier adaptive sports camps in the country. And then he goes to Buffalo where he pursues his other sport, which is sled hockey, and he does a week-long camp in sled hockey. And then he tries out for the U.S. National Team Developmental Squad with the goal of one day potentially being a member of the U.S. National Sled Hockey Team. And the U.S., the United States, when I was asking him who are the powerhouses in the world in sled hockey, the United States is the powerhouse, aren't they? So Ethan is a very talented athlete and he's also just an all-around great student. Does very well at the high school, we're so proud of him. And I'm going to let his coach, Stuart Mendelson, our varsity boys track coach, talk a little bit about some of his five state championships in track.
Thank you, Dr. K. Ethan has been a state qualifier all three years so far in his high school career. He's qualified in 100 meter, 200 meter, 400 meter and 800 meter of the wheelchair division. Freshman year, he was just getting excited to see what he could do. And then sophomore year, he became state champion in the 200, 400 and 800, took runner up in the 100. Last year, when he did make state and set those state championships, he also is the current record holder for the 200, 400 and 800. And then this past year, Ethan, in even hotter weather with a strong south wind, although he did not make state champion in the 200, he still became state champion in the 400 and 800 meter events. And as Dr. K, his work ethic and he's a workhorse. At the start of track season, it's the longest sport. We start at the end of January for indoor season and parents are nice enough that we get his rollers inside our fieldhouse. And Ethan is just working out on a stationary roller, doing his workouts. He goes to CrossFit after practice, get his lifting done. And then outdoor season comes and it's exciting if the weather holds up and we get out on the track. And from there, it's, you know, smooth sailing.
Can you talk a little bit about how the IHSA does the unified team competition for this?
Yeah, so what was, what's great is IHSA has combined the wheelchair events with the regular track events. So Ethan competes at the same respective events of the runners that day. So Ethan, for example, the 200 meter, they will have Ethan and all the wheelchair athletes go in their 200 meter race right after, then it's all the finalists from the running events. They include it. And what was really nice last year, unfortunately Ethan was our only qualifier for state this year. Last year, when we recognized Ethan and Alex last year, their combined efforts brought us a state runner-up combined trophy that we recognized for Ethan and Alex's accomplishments. So hopefully next year, Ethan, we can get some more athletes down besides you and maybe bring home another combined state trophy.
Ethan, would you like to say?
Yeah, let's hear it from Ethan.
I just, I had a blast doing it this year. I don't know. It's really good.
Ethan, is this your guest that you brought for the meeting? And I have a feeling that she has had something to do with getting you to this point. So we, as a board, not only recognize Ethan for your accomplishments and your excellence and we thank you for your contribution, but we know that he wouldn't be here without you.
And what I found out in the hallways, he gets all his athletic ability from my own. And Ethan is a very proud Big Brother. His brother is a junior who is a hockey player and he has a sister who's an eighth grader at Highland, who is a very passionate female hockey player. And so we've got another wildcat and one coming down the road. So, and as I told mom, keep them coming because we're proud of all of them.
Thank you.
So let's, yeah, all right, let's call it over to the regular business meeting for Board of Education for Monday, June 17th. If I could ask everybody to stand and please recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody. Roll call, please.
Jim Batson?
Here.
Don Carmichael?
Here.
Pat Rudy?
Here.
Lisa Hessel?
Yes.
Kevin Huber?
Here.
Karen Lundsted?
Here.
Casey Rooney?
Here.
Okay, so everybody's present. Tonight, we will open it up for public comment. We've already done the student recognition, that will be part of the table meeting. Let's see. We, I just have a couple of brief comments in the present report. We will get the superintendent's report with a number of updates. We'll approve the consent vote agenda and have brief updates from Facilities and Finance, Program and Personnel. Thinking of CIO, right? Brief mention of CIO and IASB?
Nothing.
Okay. And our updates from the committees will be brief as we've already reviewed them in detail earlier this evening. Okay? All right. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak? All right, seeing none. You know, just a couple or one comment really from myself. I just want to say thanks to everybody for the year-end activities. I know how busy that is. It was just another great finish to the year. The last couple of months, we've had some outstanding student recognition, which is phenomenal. But I think both graduation ceremonies were also just a big success. I know I was at LHS and that was a lot of fun and I watched the VHS on the video, looked like it was great. So I just want to say thanks. I know that's a lot of hard work to plan it and organize it and get it all done. And I think, you know, hard to believe another year in the books.
Amazing.
You know? And another really good year. I mean, I think if I look back on this year in particular, we got a lot of wheels moving this year. So we got some real momentum going on a whole bunch of fronts. I gotta tell you, I'm increasingly impressed with everything you guys have done with daring. All right, I've held that example up a couple of times with my previous employer. Because it's the first time I've actually seen one of these things actually start to stick in a long time. So I really compliment you guys in what you're doing. I think we tried to integrate that into the graduations on both houses a little bit, which was nice.
We're sharing that with...
I can hear the students talking about it.
We're sharing that with other districts tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I mean, to me, this is one that's, you know, some of the national conferences, it should be part of the, is that planned as well?
It has been, yeah. We presented it at a couple of national conferences.
Even better, yeah. I just think it's really, really good and, you know, you guys should feel really proud of it. But I just look back on this year, we've been doing this a while. I don't know that, I don't know that I can recall a year like last year. We really, we moved some big things. Teacher contract, Libertyville pool, breaking ground on the other stuff, continuing to move on the academic side, it's just, you know...
Purchase property across the street.
Purchase property across the street.
We hope.
Okay, cut down trees.
Of course, right. We hope.
No, really, yeah. It ain't over until it's over. But, no, it's really fantastic. So I just want to say thanks to everybody and the administrative team on the board for all of your really hard work. It's been great.
All good stuff.
Okay? All right, superintendent's report. Now you don't have to cross anything out because nobody goes first.
Yeah, it's, that's right. We do have four recognition things this evening, good news. D-128 Special Olympics Soccer Team won the Division II State Championship at the Illinois Special Olympics State Summer Games held June 7th and 9th. So we will have them in. So that's another state championship for our Special Olympics program. Just so proud of those, Andy and those kids, just amazing. Parents, supporters and volunteers, awesome. VHS seniors Caitlin Dohler and Alexa Pomerantz and LHS senior Jake Duffy were named to the Daily Herald's 2018-19 Lake County Academic Team. And LHS senior Lisa Zhao was named an honorable mention. The LHS Jazz Ensemble was selected to represent the state at the Illinois Music Education Conference to be held January 29th to 31st at the Peoria Civic Center. VHS senior Brian Gorashenko was named the Illinois State Historical Society's first-place winner in the 2009 Verna Ross Orndarf Scholarship Essay Competition. His essay will be published in an upcoming issue of Illinois Heritage Magazine, so congratulations to him. Next on the superintendent's report, we do want to remind our audience, as we always do between Pat and I, but our board does the yeoman's share of its work at two committee meetings. Tonight, they happen to be prior to the board meeting, usually they're two weeks before the board meeting. And so they have very in-depth discussions about issues before they come to the board and essentially at the board level, you're seeing a brief summary of those conversations. So we encourage you to come to committee meetings. We do have an interest in an issue. So LHS pool parking update.
Thought we were going to be ready spring 2019. We're not going to be ready spring of 2019, so we're shooting for July 2019. It's still very good. I mean, hats off to Gilbane for, I mean, they had nothing but bad weather.
Exactly. Given the weather...
To be within a month on this project is...
Well, remember, we started in January, we were 50 below temperatures, so we were trying to do some work, yeah.
So make sure you relay that message to Jeff, okay? Because I can tell he was expressing a lot of frustration. But I mean, you go back to the wintertime, we had the polar vortex, right? I mean, so, you know, kudos to Gilbane for keeping the thing moving.
So we believe by the end of July, everything will be done on the pool, we'll be able to jump in and actually use it. So a month-ish later, and parking? New parking in LHS?
The parking lot is moving forward. They started with curb work outside and the parking expansion. A little bit of groundwork to do there, some undercutting to be started this week. We'll move forward with that, you know. So interior finishes are moving forward at a good pace and weather permitting, we're moving forward with the exterior stuff also.
If it all overstop raining, we can actually pave, right? Parking lot.
There's a lot of work left to do outside.
Yes, sure.
Yeah, it's a mess. Okay, any other questions from the board on that? LHS-VHS additions and renovations update?
Those are underway. The LHS renovation for the old pool demo is underway, so they're working on that, that's on schedule. Cafeteria demo is being worked on and done, that's on schedule. And then the cafeteria, the classroom and the gym additions are all currently under construction, so just getting started and total so far.
Construction everywhere.
Just, you know, just one thought then, just to kind of help us all understand that these projects are on track. Could we put together for each project, maybe just a one-page summary of some high-level milestones?
High-level what?
Milestones. So, you know, for example, I'll make it up, you know, the steel work is complete or the demo's complete, just whatever you guys think, you know. For each project, we had five or 10 high-level milestones, we knew roughly when they were supposed to be done and we're tracking when they are done. Then when we say it's on track, it has a little bit more meaning to us because, you know, you sit there and say, I can't tell you how many projects I've been a part of, they've been on track up until the day they're supposed to launch. And then all of a sudden, they're like six months late. So it would just be helpful if we had just a high-level thing. And it's not something I'm going to sit there and say, oh, you missed that, but just to give us sort of a picture. Does that make any sense?
Mark, the update that Gilbane, for example, does for us, the weekly update that Gilbane does for us? I mean, that would, might be a way to track that, right?
My guess is it's even a couple of levels, it's kind of a couple of levels higher.
Yeah, we have a construction schedule that's extremely detailed and you can summarize from those numbers.
Yeah, just for everything, I mean, I guess here's the way I put this in kind of zip. If we, if we were, if you were us, you know, what would you want to see? Because you know all that detail. And I don't want to see all the construction level detail, we're not going to do that, but just a couple of high-level things. I think it would just help, I think it'd be helpful because we've got so many projects going on here right now that, you know, I think it'd be helpful for us to at least have an elevator speech if somebody asks, where are you at with that dance studio? And Libertyville, all right, well, they've completed the demo of the pool, you know, blah, 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 blah.
We have a capital plan tab on the district website.
That's where Mary's been putting the updates.
House of all, all of the information. So it sounds like what you're asking for was dovetailed very nicely with what Mary's already doing.
Yeah, Gilbane does a really detailed...
I can work, we need to upgrade that.
Do you have time on your hands?
Gilbane, all right, we need to put you back to work. The, Gilbane actually does a pretty detailed, you know, in our weekly summary where they would say, you know, this has been done, this has been done, but we could use for you, for the board, you know, we can modify, we can modify those highlights.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for that.
Pilot and hit those milestones on a monthly basis.
Yeah, because if they get the steel and they actually say in the update, still went in this week or still will go in this week.
Yeah. Well, for example, the kind of thing that I think would be important is, and Jeff was pretty good about saying, look, if we don't get the, you know, my word's not exactly his, if we don't get this demo done by end of the summer, there's going to be a lot of noise in the demo. Okay? All right, you know what? I'd like to know that that demo's going to get done before the end of the summer because I don't want to have the kids distracted by all that. So it's, you know...
It's less of a...
We need to get the cafeteria re-put together so it looks like it used to for this, whatever, stuff like that, that we can just understand the critical parts of the project.
But less of what's actually happening and more of, these are the things that need to happen, like for the cafeteria to be open again.
Yeah, and I think through the eyes of the users of the building, more so than the technical. So I don't really care so much about the, you know, HVAC system's in. As much as I care about is the building going to be in the shape we need it to be in, when we need it to be in? Because this is pretty disruptive to what's going on. I mean, certainly try to walk around that building...
Two years?
Yeah, no, I think this is...
And they won't have any air until the kids come back.
Yeah, so anything you could do is just create that picture, but I don't know, I didn't ask for it earlier, but, okay. Don't spend more than half an hour.
Okay? LHS-VHS therapy dogs, Brian, you want to do a thumbnail summary?
Sure. So both of our schools are looking to implement having therapy dogs for, you know, for next year. Again, a therapy dog is really not a service dog, but it's a therapy dog, emotional support dog that can be utilized for a number of different reasons. Improving culture in the building, helping to decrease anxiety and worries with our students and even our staff. You know, just having a dog, maybe just for a few minutes, can positively impact our students, you know, that are maybe going through troubling times or some stressful times. So our LSTs, our learning support teams are looking to have a therapy dog available with one of our counselors at Vernon Hills High School, Tiffany Highland, and with a social worker, Greg Loyka, at Libertyville High School. Currently Vernon Hills High School and Tiffany, she already owns a dog and so will be, you know, their process, they're a little bit ahead in that they already have the dog in place. Some training has been done with Tiffany. So some other members of our staff will also go through some therapy dog training. Libertyville will be working with one of, a private organization, Interquest, to be able to purchase a dog with funds from some other organizations and from the staff member that's actually going to own the dog. So they still have a little bit of work to do, you know, on, you know, purchasing the dog. But that dog will be, you know, hopefully introduced soon to, especially at Vernon Hills, to our community through some communications, out to our staff members, students, parents, community. And hopefully in the fall, be available at open houses in the school so that the people get to know the dog. And then they'll work on, you know, scheduling time in support groups, individual time and also classrooms, three days per week for the dog. And dogs have been successful. We use them a little bit, just having them come in, you know, have hares' lead or in times of need in our schools. But there's other schools, District 214, the main township schools, that, and even private, you know, schools or hospitals that use dogs to success. So we're looking forward to, you know, both schools, you know, being able to move forward with having therapy dogs available for students and our staff.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
And just to summarize that, no cost to the district, just sort of...
No cost to the district, yeah.
Okay, next on the superintendent's report is IASB Proposed Resolution Special Education Reimbursement. The Lake County superintendents and superintendents in other counties have written a draft letter that will be signed off on by hopefully all the districts on each county and sent to the Illinois Association of School Boards. Jim Batson is our representative for IASB. And we're requesting that IASB adopt the resolution and it will have an impact on special education reimbursement, do some things that have needed to be done in Illinois for a couple of years. In addition, our district itself is an individual district, working with Kelly Hartwig, our Director of Special Education, will take that framework of that letter and really tailor it to a letter from our district individually to IASB. And the way this works then, this information will go to IASB and then IASB will consider that issue as it considers other resolutions for potential state legislation in November at the tri-conference. And Jim is our representative and comes back to our board and reviews all of the IASB proposed resolutions before they vote on them. So we're hopeful in terms of that. There's no action for the board to take, just their acknowledgement that it would be okay for me to move forward. Next on the agenda for the superintendent's report is EDRED, FY '20 Membership. And I know our board, just coming out of, you know, the budget season and legislation, is familiar with EDRED, but EDRED stands for Education Research and Development and it is really the Chicago area suburban education advocacy lobby group. There are just tons of districts in the Chicago area that are part of EDRED. They are an active part of our array of advocates and lobbyists in Springfield. They were very helpful this year, once again. So as a member of that group, our membership fee is $5,000 and we've had a long history with EDRED. So I would certainly recommend that we pay our membership fee and continue to be active members of EDRED. So Pat, we would need a motion and then a vote on that.
All right, so is there a motion to renew our EDRED membership for fiscal year 2020 in the amount of $5,000?
I will to read our membership amendment.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Batson?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, next on superintendent's agenda, semi-annual review of closed session minutes. Twice a year, we're required by law to go back and review our closed session minutes and after review, this time, we are not recommending the release of any closed session minutes at this time. We would need to vote to not release those. If the board would like to have further discussion about releasing any of those, then Pat, you can take us into closed session and we can have that discussion. But our recommendation is that we do not release any of the closed session minutes at this time.
All right, so let me ask the question first. Is there anybody that thinks we should go into executive session and discuss this? No? Okay, so then is there a motion to continue to keep the closed session minutes closed?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Does that actually one question?
Sure.
I assume our attorney is in concurrence with this and actually needs kind of his charge, right?
Yeah.
All right, any else? Roll call, please.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Okay, so we will remove the executive session then from the agenda tonight. Okay.
Okay, last on the superintendent's report tonight is our FOIA requests. So we have two requests this month. First request was received on 5/21/19 from Tim Ship, timship45@yahoo.com. Please provide the following information for your current superintendent, yours as a superintendent to your district, base salary in annual dollars, BOE paid TRS contribution, if any, in annual dollars, BOP, BOE paid health or other insurance contribution, if any, in annual dollars, BOE paid retirement benefits, new year or other, if any, in annual dollars, number of annual sick days, number of annual vacation days, other compensation benefits, if any, in annual dollars. Please define the category of any other benefits listed. This is a commercial request and response date was 5/23/19. And I can tell you that this gentleman is actually a working administrator doing superintendent search work. So just seeking to do some comparative data.
And all of that's on the website, except for how many years you've been here.
Yes, yeah, it is.
But even that's there.
Yeah, you can figure that out because all the contracts are there. So they're looking at a broad base of, to do some comparative data collection for a client district. 6/419 from Janie Jordan, janie@dataresearchpartners.com in Austin, Texas, a listing of all Community High School District 128's employees' first and last names, email address, title position and primary campus department location. Carol, again, did the follow-up on this, response date was 6/5/19 and only took several minutes to complete that request. And Pat, with that, the superintendent's report is finished.
Okay, thank you. All right, consent vote agenda is listed as was mentioned, we reviewed this earlier this evening. So if I could ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Rooney?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Facility and Finance Committee Chairperson Huber.
All right, so we had a long meeting prior to the board meeting. And the first item we wanted to talk about is the resolution calling for a public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 budget. I believe the resolution was included in the packet.
August 12th, 6:00 p.m.
August 12th, 6:00 p.m. for those who want to come and talk with us about the budget. All right, so we need to probably have a formal motion for that resolution. We've got here, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Seeing that... Call.
Hessel?
Aye.
Huber?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
So we are going to be back here August 12th, we'll be back before then, but August 12th, 6:00 p.m. to talk about budget, in this room.
In this room.
All are invited.
All are invited and encouraged to attend.
Please.
Second item was the annual audit, Miller Cooper and Company 2019 audit engagement letter. We discussed their audit engagement letter and the fee associated with the 2019 engagement. Do we have any questions? You want to?
No, it's just an engagement, we're prepared to do our annual audit services, including we'll probably have to have a single audit again, so.
Fantastic. And again, I think the fees were in the audit engagement, but they're in the 40,000 to 45,000 range depending on services, I think. Correct?
Correct, and depending on kind of what ends up happening.
So. Great. Can I have a motion to approve Miller Cooper and Company to perform our 2019 audit engagement as previously discussed?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? See you then, Carol.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
All right, third item we talked about, school treasurer's bond. We go out and, I'll let Dan explain it, but we go out and carry some bonds.
If treasurer's bond, I have to be bonded according to state laws, a school treasurer. And we have had it provided by Gallagher for a number of years. We renegotiated with Gallagher for the same coverage, but at a cost less, about $6,200. So I would recommend the board approve the treasurer's bond renewal with Gallagher in the amount of $24,900.
Motion to. So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Questions? Carol.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye. Our next item we talked about was Gilvane, which our project manager for a significant number of projects that we have going on in the district. I think Dan briefly talked about standardizing, having a master contract, I believe you called it, and that way it made everybody a little bit more efficient as we move forward.
Yep, it's a 134 that also incorporates an A201 that we would recommend for approval to engage Gilvane in construction management professional services that'll encompass particularly the Vernon Hills additions, renovations, and the LHS will approve renovation that we're currently working on.
So what is this, let's just clarify, what is this to approve though? Because we're not actually approving the contract tonight.
We're recommending approval of the contract.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, it was right behind you.
You're right.
Yeah, so we'll get a final one that's clean, but this is at least, we got it on Thursday and I wanted to include something that we had it, so this is the one Linda's told us this is the right.
This is the one you've been working on for six months.
Six months, great.
Yeah.
And it eliminates the necessity to have to renegotiate contracts for each of the projects that we have on the board right now.
Correct. So we basically did the pre-work for any other contracts, any other work we would want to do. And then as a new project comes up, we would just kind of negotiate those fine terms, those fine costs.
School board.
Other questions regarding the master contract for Gilvane? We have a motion to approve as presented earlier.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Carol.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, great. So the next item we talked about was the athletic trainer, head athletic trainer Libertyville retired. So we talked about athletic training at both Libertyville and Vernon Hills and ultimately with the goal of potentially standardizing something down the line. But I think this year we need to do something at Libertyville to replace that individual. So we talked about that a little bit.
Correct, yep, we did, RP. And we're recommending approval of one full-time athletic trainer for LHS to replace Ron Osso's retiring at a cost of $36,080 for this, next year's July 1st through June 30th.
So you're only approving at the athletic over a year.
As a, we'll do two separate, right?
Well, and so what I'm actually recommending is the board giving authority for the superintendent to designate to enter into a contract that's a one-year agreement with Athletico for the full-time, one full-time athletic training services at a cost of $36,080 because we're still got to fine-tune some of the terms, like the legalese and stuff like that that we want to do. So that's, and then we're going to get to strength training in a second.
Okay, yeah, so this is just athletic. The first motion is just for the athletic.
At 36. May I type that motion as presented?
So the motion will be to authorize the superintendent or designate to sign the agreement as presented for athletic.
I move to approve the superintendent to, or designate to approve a contract to perform with Athletico for services for one year at Libertyville High School.
And you know, there were $6,200.
$6,800.
$800.
Second.
Questions?
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, great. Now, are you all?
Yep, also would recommend the board authorize superintendent to enter into a contract with Illinois Bone and Joint Institute for the strength performance, strength.
Conditioning.
Strength conditioning services at a cost of $35,000 per school. So total cost of $70,000 for the district for one year, beginning July 1st through June 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Okay.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
And when we've executed those contracts, we'll report back to you.
Okay. All right, anything else for Facilities and Finance? See you then, okay, we're done.
Okay, good job. All right, program personnel, Chairperson Batson.
Thank you, Dr. Rudy. We have a couple items here, three items. The exact, a series of four board policies for a second reading adoption, one under the heading of Board of Education, that's policy 2:2, the powers and duties of the Board of Education, indemnification, I knew I was going to blow it down. The next two are under the heading of Operational Services, and that's policy 4:110, Transportation, and 4:150, Facility Management and Building Programs. And the fourth one is under the heading of Instruction, which is policy 6:15, School Accountability. These were reviewed and actually read in for a first reading last month, so this is just for the adoption. Nothing has changed since then, so we have a motion to adopt these policies.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, roll call please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Item B is a D128 agreement pertaining to regulation of traffic and parking, and this is for both Libertyville and Vernon Hills, intergovernmental agreements. Do you think we want to comment on this for the record so that the public understands?
Give Mary some clarification for the public to understand that the police have a role.
Yeah, so if you look at this intergovernmental agreement, we already have one currently in place at Vernon Hills High School with the police department. It was a five-year agreement in, that was signed in 2000 with three five-year rollovers. So basically, it's essentially a 20-year agreement. So it's coming up for renewal, but to kind of bring both schools in line with some, you know, current procedures. We'll do them both at the same time, which saves us a little bit of attorney costs. So I presented both of disagreements to Vernon Hills and Libertyville. Vernon Hills is still reviewing some of the language, but they believe that, you know, they'll approve it. Libertyville has, you know, approved the language that we're proposing. It gives the Village of Vernon Hills and the Village of Libertyville Police Department and actually our SRO, who's a member of the police department, the ability to ticket people that are parked illegally or not following our posted speed limit signs in our parking lot. They give us suggestions also on what we should have in our parking lot, although we have final say and control over signage in the parking lot because we're the ones paying for it. So, but it's just, it's, it helps us that, you know, we can enforce some of the laws that we, regulations that we want in our parking lot, keep it safe for our students and their parents.
And is contract on file with the, with Lake County?
Once, once everything is signed by both, I will ensure that we send it to the Lake County Recorder of Deeds to make sure that is on file so that if anyone ever disputes a ticket that they got in our parking lot, Lake County's got a record of it. So it has to be, the way this is set up, it has to go to Lake County and be on file. So, and anyone can do a public search of that and find it either electronically or go into Lake County and find this document.
We have a motion, please.
I move to approve the D128 agreement pertaining to regulation of traffic and parking. Okay?
Any further questions or comments or discussion?
You know, I have a question. So obviously this is still a village ticket, so it's not something that goes, that goes to the village.
Correct.
Village forces, so it has to go through the county pass system.
Yeah.
I do have one question. So this isn't an agreement with Lake County, and sometimes we have Lake County Sheriff's Police on campus for events, football games, whatever.
Most of the people we have on campus for us will always be Vernon Hills.
Or Libertyville.
So we don't have an agreement with Lake County, they would not be able to come on.
Read it to Vernon Hills and Libertyville.
Anything else?
Okay, roll call please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. One final thing, it's the Illinois E Plan, Consolidated District Plan.
The Consolidated District Plan, which we are asking you to approve this evening, is Phase One of a three-part plan by ISB to consolidate the process for applying for and administering federal title grants. And so this Phase One is really a series of planning questions that the district is required to answer for Title II, Title IV, and IDEA Part B grants. So we've completed the planning questions, which are part of the plan, and are asking you to approve that plan so that we can hit submit to ISB in preparation for actually submitting our grant application. In later phases, those grant applications will also be consolidated and will have a dashboard to access, a single dashboard to access information related to each of those grants, which are now separate applications.
Okay. Do we have a motion, please?
I want to approve the Consolidated District Plan.
Second. Okay, any questions, comments, clarification? No, okay, roll call please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, great. So the next item we talked about was the athletic trainer, head athletic trainer Libertyville retired. So we talked about athletic training at both Libertyville and Vernon Hills, and ultimately with the goal of potentially standardizing something down the line. But I think this year we need to do something at Libertyville to replace that individual. So we talked about that a little bit.
Correct, yep, we did, RP. And we're recommending approval of one full-time athletic trainer for LHS to replace Ron Osso's retiring at a cost of $36,080 for this, next year's July 1st through June 30th.
So you're only approving at the athletic over a year.
As a, we'll do two separate, right?
I'm, well, and so what I'm actually recommending is the board giving authority for the superintendent to designate to enter into a contract that's a one-year agreement with Athletico for the full-time, one full-time athletic training services at a cost of $36,080 because we're still got to fine-tune some of the terms, like the legalese and stuff like that that we want to do. So that's, and then we're going to get to strength training in a second.
Okay, yeah, so this is just athletic. But this is just athletic. The first motion is just for the athletic.
At 36. May I type that motion as presented?
So the motion will be to authorize the superintendent or designate to sign the agreement as presented for athletic.
I move to approve the superintendent to, or designate to approve a contract to perform with Athletico for services for one year at Libertyville High School.
And you know, there were $6,200.
Right.
$6,800.
Second.
Questions?
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. One final thing, it's the Illinois E Plan, Consolidated District Plan.
that we, regulations that we want in our parking lot, to keep it safe for our students and their parents.
And is contract's on file with the Lake County?
Once, once everything is signed by both, I will ensure that we send it to the Lake County Recorder of Deeds to make sure that it is on file, so that if anyone ever disputes a ticket that they got in our parking lot, Lake County's got a record of it. So it has to be, the way this is set up, it has to go to Lake County and be on file, so, and anyone can do a public search of that and find it either electronically or go into Lake County and find this document.
We have a motion, please?
I'm moved to approve the D128 agreement pertaining to regulation of traffic and parking. Okay.
Any further questions or comments or discussion?
You know, I have a question. So obviously this is a solid village ticket, so it's not something that goes to the village and village enforcement, so they have to go through the county pass system.
Yeah.
I do have one question. So this isn't an agreement with Lake County, and sometimes we have Lake County Sheriff's Police on campus for events, football games, whatever.
Most of the people we have on campus for us will always be Vernon Hills.
Or Libertyville.
So we don't have an agreement with Lake County, they would not be able to...
Green and to Vernon Hills and Libertyville.
Anything else? Okay, roll call please.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Motion passes. One final thing, it's the Illinois E Plan, Consolidated District Plan.
The Consolidated District Plan, which we are asking you to approve this evening, is Phase One of a three-part plan by ISB to consolidate the process for applying for and administering federal tail grants. And so this Phase One is really a series of planning questions that the district is required to answer for Title II, Title IV, and IDEA Part B grants. So we've completed the planning questions, which are part of the plan, and are asking you to approve that plan so that we can hit submit to ISB in preparation for actually submitting our grant application. In later phases, those grant applications will also be consolidated, and we'll have a dashboard to access, a single dashboard to access information related to each of those grants, which are now separate applications.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'm moved to approve the Consolidated District Plan.